I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 6th, 2018 Duval City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise for the platoon and my council member Mike Henry?
I come with your leaders to the fire of the United States of America. And as you bring your light, the world is just hands. One nation under God, individual, and liberty in this world.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please say hello? Councilmember Fred Nicky.
Here.
Councilmember Iyer.
Here.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Rennington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoads.
Here.
Councilmember Naffler.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Do we have a form? Thank you. Do we have any additions or, well, actually, um, or addition or focus? Under additions and corrections of the agenda, under consent agenda, please add payroll for October 19th, 2018, an amount of $159,896.07. Payroll for November 5th, 2018, an amount of $283,744.67. And claims, an amount of $274,604.04. Do we have any other additions or corrections of the agenda or council members that would like to speak this evening? Councilmember McHenry. All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion for adoption of the council agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So who?
Sir.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Under eradication of contracts, under declaration of emergency, we have nothing new this evening. Do we have anyone from the audience that would like to speak this evening? Mr. Falcone, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Bill Falcone, 14524 Main Street Northeast, Duval. I'm a member of the Snow Valley Senior Center on their board of directors. And today I'd like to advocate to keep funding for human services in the Duval City Council, or city budget. These funds have had a positive impact on seniors living here in Duval. As some of you may know, United Way has cut funding for seniors in recent years, and this has had a huge impact on our budgets. We operated in the red in 2017, and are again in the red for 2018. Hopefully, we'll get that back up by the end of year, but in large part due to these cuts. The Snow Valley Senior Center is one place serving older adults in the valley. Every year, we serve 1,500 people in Duval with food, fitness, health, and social opportunities. We're more than a building, we're a life form for many. Please keep us in your city budget at the $10,000 level. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Laura Smith, 17626315, Porter, please. I am the director for the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network. As many of you know, our mission is to promote youth to lead safe, healthy, and successful lives. First and foremost, I want to thank you for your service and commitment to the citizens of our city. I appreciate you. I also wanted to thank you for the $10,000 that you did set aside in the budget for 2018. This $10,000 in funding was very important to the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network. This funding helped us train all of the seventh and eighth graders at Tole Middle School in how to help a friend who is struggling. This funding helped us coordinate the weekend power pack program. Currently, there's 130 power packs that go out to kids throughout the school each week providing four meals, and four snacks, and four drinks for the weekend. Over the course of a school year, that's over 18,000 meals that kids can show up on Monday when their brain's still healthy and ready to learn. This funding also helped us launch youth success mentoring program last year. It's designed to help youth connect to a positive, consistent parent and adult. Some kids don't have that at home. This program started last year with two schools and now is at 10 in the whole valley. It's at Carnation, Cherry Valley, Stillwater, and Cedar Crest, soon to be at the other Riverview School District schools. Youth success mentoring really is prevention in its purest form. Kids early on connecting with a parent and adult, providing that connection, keeping them safe. This funding also helped us fund important community awareness events such as Hidden Plains Zeit. Thank you Mayor Al Klandner for coming to that. And the upcoming angst film screening, which will be on December 5th, that I hope you will try to come out to. Gives us the opportunity as a community to talk about what our youth are struggling with and how we might best wrap around them to support them. The $10,000 from the city made it possible for us to say to funders, "All the cities in the Snoqualmie Valley have an investment in youth." It made it possible for us to leverage that with the county, as well as foundations who are interested, who else is coming to the table supporting youth development? I'm here tonight to urge you to maintain human services funding in your budget. Our city is growing, the health and wellness of our youth, our families, and our seniors should be front and foremost as you consider your budget. Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? If you could provide your name and address after the word "a," that would be great.
Hi, my name is Ashwin Subharanman. I'm from 5037326 Place, Northeast Carnation, Washington. And I'm a senior at Cedar Crest High School, and I'm here today to encourage you to maintain human services funding for both the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network and the Snow Valley Senior Center. First and foremost, I'd like to say the work you do does not go unnoticed and plays a huge role in our opportunities to succeed in this school and in the community every day. Both organizations provide key services in our community. I am connected to the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network as the vice president of RYC, the Riverview Youth Council. The Snoqualmie Valley Community Network is important to our community because it raises awareness to important causes. For example, the suicide prevention training we receive and presentations we give are extremely important in educating our community's youth about their roles in suicide prevention. The meals we serve at residencies of the less fortunate, such as those in Washington's Camp Unity, both encourages youth involvement in their community and assists those in need. Having been a part of RYC for two years now, I can generally say that the Riverview Youth Council has played a immense role in my role as a community contributor and empathetic citizen. In closing, the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network provides key youth development. Please keep the funding for these important supports, and thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Jake Tisdale, and I am from 2833 Northeast 138 Place, Duval, Washington. And I would like to share my support for this funding because, and share my story from the Riverview Youth Council. So I joined the Riverview Youth Council as a sixth grader, and from there, I learned how to plan and organize events, and doing such, I organized a dinner in my seventh grade for homeless shelter to ensure that people were able to have food that night. And going on, I continued to help out with fundraisers such as Haunted House. Later on into this year, I have moved on to starting to help out with recruitment so that more people can join and have the same opportunities that I've had in order to help other people. I feel like this is a good program that encourages you to live safe and healthy lives and encourage education for a safe environment for everybody to have, and I encourage you to support funding. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Angela DeBruno. I live at 28921 Northeast 124th Street. I'm here today, well, first and foremost, I want to thank you guys so much for your services. You are the reason why we are the community that we are. I'm here in regards to the funding of the Snoqualmie Networking System and the Snow Valley Senior Center. I am the activities manager of the Riverview Youth Council, and this will be my second year on the suicide prevention team. And that's a really big part of my presentation today because I know that anxiety, and suicide, and depression are three really specific topics that we don't like to talk about. So we kind of put them in a box and toss them in the back of our minds because they don't directly apply to us, even though we know how important they are. And I know personally, I have three to four kids come to me every night, some of which I don't even know, that I've heard from a friend, and a friend, and a friend, that I'm open to talk to people and help them through things. They come to me, and one of the most common things that I hear them say is that they feel alone. They feel like nobody understands them, nobody has the same feelings they have, and they just don't think anybody would notice or even care in their career anymore. What the suicide prevention team does is we go directly to the source to these kids that it's directly affecting, and we let them know they're not alone in these feelings and the way that they think, and that there's coping mechanisms. We say, we show them statistics, facts, we let them know that it's not the end, that there's more that they can do, and that they can keep pushing forwards, give each other ways to deal with friends and loved ones that are also going through the same thing. And even if you guys don't realize it, you play just as much of a part in that as we do, and your funding is really essential for us. And so we ask that you don't cut the funding because we really need you guys, and we thank you so much. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carson McDermott. I live at 152923rd Avenue Northeast. So thank you all very much, sorry y'all, thank you very much for your time tonight. I'm here tonight in hopes that you'll continue supporting and funding Snoqualmie Valley Community Network. Our organization provides the opportunity for young people like myself to establish connections throughout the community, to strengthen our values, and become great leaders. I'm a perfect example of this. I've established many connections, gained more friends, and helped recruit more people for RYC. I strengthened my ability with collaboration, as well as stepping into the position of president of RYC. Some examples of community events being organized and completed are serving to less fortunate I can't unity, organizing senior center community events, community cheer setups, raise funds for toys for less fortunate children, help social activities, take an exchange with one another, and many more community events. All of these would not be sufficient without the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network. To me, the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network is a vital element in life of the youth. Please do not cut funding for these important supports. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Belinda McDermott from 15209285th Avenue Northeast, in Duval. Thank you all for your time and the time to serve you and our community. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network and as a parent of a student who has benefited from and been involved in the Riverview Youth Council for three years now. Snoqualmie Valley Community Network provides key services to our community, starting with a foundation for our youth to be leaders and take action on their skills. It helps them understand and become aware of issues in our community, root causes, and builds on strategies for change through their actions. Young people are most likely to develop these strengths when they're connected to programs and organizations just like this. The Snoqualmie Valley Community Network is so important in our community because it teaches youth leadership, collaboration, and community involvement. Last year, I watched these kids raise funds, work hard, shop to distribute and distribute holiday gifts for underprivileged kids. They serve meals at Camp Unity, as well as various other volunteer opportunities. Riverview Youth Council helps young people find their voice through organizing, advocacy, and community leadership, and provides youth development that these kids will use throughout their lives. Please don't cut funding for these important supports. Thank you.
Meaning, would anyone else like to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, thank you so much for all those who speak this evening. Next up, we have a presentation from the Department of Transportation on the 2018 Award of Excellence. And I'd like to welcome Kathleen Davis, Director of Local Programs for WASHA, to the podium, as well as Don Mathis, Division Director for the Federal Highway Administration. Mayor Don, I'm the local programs engineering manager from the Washington State Department of Transportation.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Again, Kathleen Davis with the Washington State Department of Transportation, Dan Mathis with the Federal Highway Administration. We've been collaborating with each other for, gosh, since my career in local programs in providing awards of excellence. We have four categories: Best City, Best County, Best Special, and a Director's Award. And what we do is we formally recognize local agencies who are managing federal aid projects, looking at innovation, design, sustainability, community engagement, project administration, and recognize those agencies that we feel like are doing really the best of the best. And so it's my delight to actually be recognized at Duval tonight for your Main Street South Project as a Director's Award. What really inspired me for this particular project was your vision that you had, I think, in early 2000 on, you know, this is a state highway running through your town, it really doesn't act and feel like a main street of a community. And so I'm taking that vision into what you have now, which is a terrific entryway into town, and a lot more safe places for people to walk and bike, traverse the highway. And so I just want to congratulate you, thank Mayor Don and his team too for assisting you. I understand this is the largest project, I think, in public works that the city's ever managed, and so it's not easy dealing with the federal strings that the federal government requires you to manage a project. And I really appreciate, you know, a small town doing a really successful project management. And so kudos to you all, project team.
Yeah, I really wanted to offer my congratulations as well, Dan Mathis, Federal Highway Administration. We're always happy to contribute to projects such as this, projects that improve safety, and, you know, safety for the traveling public, safety for pedestrians. I understand there was, you know, some conflicts in the past, and also for cyclists. I'm a cyclist, so I love to see bike lanes. And I congratulate you on the partnerships, you know, partnerships with the community in deciding what you wanted, partnerships with others in getting funding, because it wasn't just, you know, federal funds, it was TIB funds, it was city funds, and I think the state even had some money involved in the covert part of the project. And so that ends up with a project that just enhances the quality of life, and this is a really quaint community. I've never been here before, but I'll be back. And I noticed it says "City of Duval, Small Town, Real Life," and I think this kind of project actually enhances the livability of the community. And I want to congratulate you on that, and there's one thing that really kind of stood out to me on this project was the illusion of a bridge, which I think is really cool. I hadn't run across that before anywhere, and congratulate you for being innovative and creative with that. Again, my congratulations to the city.
Which way are we going?
Now, where can you get it from? This is Charlotte. Not exact.
Okay, everybody has to look this way. This is where the camera is. On one, two, three. Let's do one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Put that in a very prominent location.
Thank you so much to all of you. It's really an honor to receive this award for the city, and it really took a village and a lot of vision and a lot of effort to plan this project and make it pan out when we started with literally nothing. And it was the partnerships that really helped get us there. So thank you so much for everything that you did for us.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Moving on, under schedule items, we have a long agenda tonight, so I'm going to be very quick with my new report, but hopefully get a much more extensive one at the next meeting. Two key meetings that I attended in the last week, one of which was yesterday with Interim City Administrator and Planning Director Ms. Laura Thomas for King County Parks. For those who aren't aware, they will have a levy on the ballot for their parks next year, either in the summer or the fall. It's a very large package that not only has existing maintenance and operations, but also future maintenance needs to parks. There are a lot of questions, I think, coming from the valley, and we'll be working with valley cities to try and find ways to get more projects in the valley included in the plan, because there are several areas that are pretty much just lumped out at this point. But we'll be working on that, and we have a letter to bring forward, ask council to sign that. Second meeting, last week, I attended the official kickoff meeting for finish 522. It's a coordinated effort led by City of Monroe and several businesses and local government agencies to start to make the push for getting the key projects on 522 finished. And there were several elected officials in the aisle, including two from the 39th District, both of whom are actually willing to support the gas packs in order to get the projects funded, which is the first time ever from legislators in the 39th Legislative District. So that is a huge shift in the priorities of the legislators in that district, and it's very encouraging. I did arrive late due to a meeting here, and was immediately asked to speak, and I did ask the question of the audience, there was about 15 people in the audience, all of them from the Monroe area, "How many people use Woodendale Duval Road to get to Monroe?" Almost every single hand raised in that audience, which was a real interesting visual of not being in Duval, to see how many people are utilizing those roads to avoid 522. So that will be bringing more information forward. I forgot to bring the petition this evening. They are asking elected officials, businesses, and individuals to sign the petition so they can take those petitions to Olympia to show how many people want those projects done. And I'll finish with that, and then I'll give a larger update at the next meeting. So moving on to Councilmember McHenry.
Thank you. Just as a super quick, I attended the Friends of Youth's 6th Annual Youth and Family Services Breakfast, which is to support the students of the Snoqualmie Valley School District and the Riverview School District. And especially hearing now from all of these young people about supporting the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network. There is some lapse in services. They had a panel of counselors from different schools here, our schools, Tole, Cedar Crest, and one of the elementary schools, Cherry Valley. And I mean, how many weeks are we into school? And they were adding up how many students they had that they were worried about self-harm, and it was at about 17. So it was pretty sobering and just seeing that each of these counselors has over 500 students that they have to look after, and it's not just mental health, it's also academic. So there's that, and then on top of that, just looking out for these kids, and they really worry about them falling through the cracks. So Friends of Youth, Snoqualmie Valley Community Network are really amazing resources, and it's something to really think about. And so I brought something for each of you. It's a card that fits in a wallet, and you never know when you might need this. It has a phone number for youth shelters, there's an overnight shelter, a short-term shelter, and just in general, an outreach for youth services. So I think it's a handy thing to keep in your purse or your wallet, and if you run into a kid who really needs some help, you have something to give them. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, council member. Moving on for an administration update, Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Laura Thomas, for the record, let me go ahead and pull up. I'll go ahead and start, I'm going to turn this thing over. So obviously, we shared really good news last week at the COW. We were successful in recruiting 17 candidates for our public work check representation. Obviously, internally and externally, we're all really thrilled about this. You know, you never know where you're going to get, and you don't lose a headhunter, but what I will say is our internal team did a really good job, and we all parried together in all the different places we could recruit from. And so I just wanted to go through kind of what our next steps are. So tomorrow, we closed last Thursday, and then we immediately turned around on Friday and created a scoring matrix and created our teams that we're going to evaluate it. Those are due tomorrow at noon, and then tomorrow afternoon at about 2, we'll be meeting with that team, because we'll compile all the results of this scoring matrix, and we'll start to narrow it down into a number of individuals that we will interview for the process. We're hoping that maybe we have, you know, eight highly qualified candidates, you know, pull from an interview. If we have 10, we'll interview 10. If we have five, we'll interview five. We're not quite sure yet until everybody completes the process. Our first interview will be November 15th and 16th, so we'll do it over two days. We have two panels. We have an executive panel that has six members, and that'll be led by Police Chief Carrie Hurt, and the staff panel will be led by me, the planning director, Laura Thomas. Within those, obviously, the executive panel is, you know, a little bit higher up, and then the staff panel is more of us working folks. And so if you haven't heard from the mayor yet, you will be soon. She has the ability to place a council member on this group at the executive panel level, and also a community member. And then there's an internal Sarah Rollin, who's the executive assistant to the public works director. So she'll be on that one, as well as Tim Hayden, who has been with us helping us through problem. And then on the staff panel, it's public works staff and myself. And so we're really excited to begin this process. After we've completed that first interview, we'll provide all of the candidates a written exercise that contains technical and scenario questions, and they'll have about 48 hours to respond and email those back, and then we'll review all of those documents. We expect that the second interview will be the first week of December. It's a little challenging, you know, so stay tuned because it is around the holidays, and so we might have to be flexible with some of our candidates if they already have plans. And then we'll narrow it down to a couple of candidates and start the reference check process. So I'll give you an update at the next meeting. But I would expect that we would have a candidate selected by the end of December. Any questions on that? Just a couple of other small pieces, everything, everything's really small, but as important as your public works director. We do need to do a wave franchise agreement extension. We had a one-year extension last year, and so we'll need to bring forward an additional year. That did not get negotiated this year, given the staff losses that we had. We have just been made aware of our contract persons, and we still have not heard back from them, so we're hopeful that we'll hear back from them soon and bring an extension forward. But as you talk about your COW, not only do you have a waste management contract, you also have this contract as well to work through next year before it expires. So we'll talk about that a little bit more, but we'll bring forward at least the extension, and then as you guys need to talk about your worries, this will be one that rises to the top.
Ms. Thomas, can I add something to the cable side?
Sure.
Just briefly, received an address from AWC, a newsletter, I think it was last week, and I apologize, I meant to have this printed out for council, I'll email it to everyone in Jersey so she can put it online as well. But further challenging any kind of cable negotiation, FCC is proposing some new rules which would continue to limit our jurisdiction's ability to recover fees, including, Coleman would appear to allow cable operators to deduct from their cable franchise fee payments the value of franchise requirements such as peg channel capacity, connection to programming origination points, and complimentary cable services to schools and other public buildings. In addition, it would limit our ability to charge for use of our right-of-way, and further restrict any sway we have at all on those providers that are providing internet service to us. So it's not good. I've asked Diane Ocker in our office to draft a letter, to do a little more research with AWC, and draft a letter to our congressional delegation and the FCC opposing these rule changes. As we know, cable fees are, and our revenue is already going down, but we're not getting any of your any replacement and we still don't have any federal authority over internet service. But yet, these are providers providing a lot of it. So it's not good, but I'll get that sent out to you guys actually this evening and keep that in mind. That'll be something that I'll be coming forward for you all.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is community water line replacement. There is a staff report that our project manager Sean Tozer provided. We wanted to give you a little bit more information when we were at our last council meeting. It was the day after the event. And so you can, essentially, we had about a $9,000 event, I will say, which isn't honestly as bad as I think it could have been if we didn't have the right circumstances and the right people in town. And so I just wanted to make sure of that. Plus, we had an updated water loss calculation. And then what I wanted to say is the next step forward is for Public Works to go back and get scope of work and bring a contract for the council so we can begin the process at the water line replacement. It is part of your 2019 and '20 budget, but we do have professional services that are available within this budget. They estimate that design cost survey work is about $40,000. The 2012 water con plan estimated the project at $173,000. Obviously, that was in, you know, $2,012, so I would expect an overall cost additional dollars. Are there any questions on that?
The amount of water that we lost, will that have any impact on the revenues of the water?
The value of the water was about $10,11, and so it'll show up as, you know, like every year, we know, you know, like how much we get billed versus a water loss. And I can't remember what, is it about, I don't know, it's 1%?
It's around 1%.
So around 1%?
Typically, that we have for unaccounted for water loss. So these are the things that are.
And that was $200?
$211.
Wow, for 1.7%?
We had, we had some over generous calculations the day after the event, so the engineer went back and made some nice calculations.
There was an online calculator that was used just really quick and I'm not really sure, I didn't trust the calculator, so I did it early and came up with a close approximation of like, to be conservative, about $100,000.
Oh, great.
It's in the sample. Thank you for our stuff. And then the next item is, and this is really just me telling you, we got a lot on the agenda for the next couple of meetings. We have quite a few public hearings at the max, two meetings, Con Plan, the TIP Transportation Improvement Plan, the Capital Improvement Plan, the School District Fee, and two fee resolutions. I'm a lot, I thought the King County Parks, I'll have the update because the mayor did, other than to say I was really disappointed. And you will be too. We'll talk about it one later.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Thomas? Councilmember Hoag.
I have a question, and please let me know, Mayor, if it's not appropriate to ask this, but could we ask WAVE if it's possible to get senior discounts on the internet?
We can certainly ask.
We should even contract, so absolutely.
Absolutely, and that has come up. I think part of that challenge is going to be with these, if these new FCC rules go up, then we'll have to pass along our rapier's. So that's one of those challenges, if they can charge extra, they'll remember to provide those discounts, which is one more reason we need to up against the rules. Councilmember Ed.
Just to respond to that, I remember at one point I found out there isn't discounted for low income or basic income. Is that right?
Maybe WAVE does not have, we had this to try and call just the last week or so, and we were told directly by WAVE that they do not have the discount for it at all. Comcast does. Comcast has a very horrible line, but we just not for this time. If they did, they don't have it anymore.
Okay, they must have discontinued that, that's too bad.
It is. Thank you. Any other questions? Great, and moving on to our Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. Ms. Crenell.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I missed seeing everyone. And I also wasn't at the workshop for the Planning Commission and the City Council to talk about the, some of the CIP and the TIP things, so this is kind of a follow-up. I'm going to provide some real general information about the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program and then hopefully try and field some questions. So this is a snapshot, not a very good snapshot, but it's a snapshot of the Six-Year TIP and I passed around, I updated the TIP to have to include project costs. So what it's broken down is it's broken down to the transportation impact fee portion and the city and grant share portion that breaks out a total of project costs. And this is all in the transportation plan in the 20-year CIP. So we, we take out of that 20-year plan to, to make a Six-Year TIP for projects that are more likely to get done within that time period and also collect TIP, Transportation Impact Fee. So it's a draft work plan for the development of local transportation systems. And some of the important facts about it, the TIP, is that the projects must be included to be eligible for state and federal grants. So that's a big reason why I'm trying to break things out, out of the 20-year plan. The local TIP is not revenue constrained because we're not saying, we're not allocating dollars out of the budget to these projects. The local TIP is not prioritized in any way. It's just, I reorganized it so that the project titles would better correspond with the MAP IDs. And then also that the state firm Transportation and Future Regional Council use local transportation improvement program project lists as tools for coordinating local projects with regional Some other requirements are, there's RCWs that govern the fact that, you know, we need to have Six-Year TIPs, projects that are included on the project list that have the potential to be completed within that Six-Year timeframe. Not that they will absolutely happen, but based on strategic planning within the city and the knowledge of developments that are coming in and projects that we can hopefully leverage grant funding for, that's why we put these projects on this list and we don't just throw the whole kitchen sink, the 20-year plan at it. The list is updated every year, so that means that if new funding opportunities come, we have the opportunity to update this project list annually. And that's all I have.
Just a quick question. I was wondering if, because I saw the back road with sidewalks, bike thing, and then under the, on the backside of that, the, I was wondering if, is it intentionally overlapped? There's a safe routes to school, missing sidewalk links. I was just curious if we're putting it kind of in both things to cover our bases or?
No, no, we're not. There, and it's broken out in a little bit more detail or better in the transportation plan, that the safe routes to school, that breaks out and identifies links that aren't included in projects that are already on CIP or TIP.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Crenell? Great. Thank you so much. Moving on, our agenda, next up, we have our final public hearing of the City of Dewalt 2019-2020 by a mail budget. And with that, I will open the hearing.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Lindy Morris Finance Director. I am going to add Exhibit 8 into the record at Laura Thomas's passing out moment. So for public hearing number two, this is our first by a mail budget. The calendar, the first part of the calendar to highlight is that the original preliminary balance budget went out on September 28th and then is made available to the public and presented to the clerk on October 2nd. In October alone, we have had over 20 hours of budget discussions between presentations by departments and discussions by council. For the mayor's priorities, her main priority is future sustainability, deferred maintenance, addressing mandates, federal and state, starting to close staffing gaps, and transportation benefit district funding, open economic development, that's squeezed in there at the end. Also under the deferred maintenance is building, vehicles, equipment, and IT. The proposed new staffing positions are for the building utility inspector and that is currently proposed as a two-year temporary position. There's also a parks maintenance position that will not start until June of 2019 and there will be a budget note on that in order to, that will be brought back to council in the first quarter of 2019 for further discussion. There will be a workload, a staff workload analysis. The funding for the TDD, there will be a slide a little bit later on that, on the $20 tab versus the 0.2% sales tax. There also will be an additional slide on capital project, projects, and this budget that's being proposed, the revised version, also maintains our appropriate reserves. Within the budget assumptions, we did include the 1% property tax. There are 120 new building permits, which are 60 per year. And the transportation benefit district that was in the original release has been removed and anything that was removed, I tried to italicize to make it a little bit more visible. The water sewer store rates are increasing by 2%. The sales tax revenue did increase by an additional $50,000. And 1% utility tax on the revenue side was removed on revenue and expense. So for the revenue, the general fund revenue, sometimes it's easier to see in a picture. So we provided a pie chart. It's very, at a quick glance, the property taxes are at 28%, sales tax 21%, utility and other taxes are at 22%, and then some smaller percentages. So the budget assumptions are the routine cost of living adjustments and step increases, which are standard costs of doing business. The healthcare is budgeted at 5.5%. Publically employed retirement system went up by 0.13%. It will go up in July 2019, the city's contribution. The cost of living adjustments for the teasers and non-represented is at 1.8%. And also on the expenditure side, the utility tax of 1% proposed increase with falsetto. For the general fund expenditures, police and fire 49%, general government is at 20% and it goes around. For a brief overlook on a different way of looking at the general fund by department, I wanted to go ahead and add this. This is, it was not in the original presentation, but it is an exhibit within the public records documents. And so it's just a different way of looking at the general fund by department instead of how we looked at it before. Also, a different way, another way, I should say, of looking at the general fund is by object code, which then you can break out the salaries and wages and personnel benefits and see that within the general fund, the main cost is our people. And moving right into that, our budgeted staffing, I thought this was really interesting. If you go back and you actually look at the detail from 2008, within the finance department, they originally, they had back in 2008, 2.9 and in the proposed 2019-20, it's 2.24. The police were at 17.89 people and now they're down to 13.8. The engineering department was at 1.04 and now they're down to 0.875. The planning department had 3.89 people and now they're down to 2.3. The building department had 2.2 and now they're down to 2.15. And that is with the proposed additional position at 50% being charged to that. Within the sewer fund, also going the other way, within the sewer utility fund, they were at 6.6 people and it went up to 7.6. And also going down to the population, the final little arrow there that are kind of messy. Our population back in 2008 was at just under 6,000 people at 1,925 and currently we have about 78 today, so. On the transportation benefit district, we have chosen to, as a council, as a team, to hold off on that. We have created a new fund, which is Fund 102. Currently in the budget, you're going to see absolutely nothing in it on the revenue or expenditure side because we are currently looking at options, whether to do the car tab option or the sales tax option. And I believe on the agenda, there will be some further discussion. And so I will leave it at that. The car, actually, I'll go over a little bit more, sorry. The car tab, you have to, when you decide to move forward with it, on your first year, you only end up with, for the Department of Licensing, about six months' worth of the revenue. So we took what we thought we would estimate the revenue at and divided it in half. And over the by a mail, the total was 198,125. Looking at the sales tax option, I should also say, the car tab option can be approved by council and moved forward, or the vehicle option, I should refer to it as. And the sales tax option has to be put out to the voters and has to be voter-approved by the simple majority. And by doing, going the sales tax option between 2019-20, it's just shy of $400,000. But that revenue, we would have to go out, have it voter-approved, and there would still be definitely, it could be a year or more before it was in the minute. So a quick overview of the whole budget by fund, by fund type. It's a quick visual for the general, the contingency, the special reserve fund, the debt funds, the capital project funds, the utility funds. You can see are definitely the bulk of the budget, the bond redemption and reserve fund and internal service funds. And this is, again, sometimes it's easier to see it by spin pictures. And this is a pie chart of that. The 2019-2020 proposed budget revenue and expenditure summary, that was the exhibit that was actually passed out and added to the record as of late. And so this just goes over and every single, this should be a very familiar report because it's provided in every single quarterly report. And for the debt payments, the overall city's debt, in 2018, they just paid off, the city has just paid off, will have paid off. The final, and so I left it up there just as a blank, that it will, that debt was paid off for the 2011 refinance of the 2000 sewer. And so there is still an additional sewer wastewater treatment plant construction debt to be paid annually. And the Big Rock and Main Street debt, of which is the general obligation debt. And then to break that down, the Main Street debt, that is being funded through REIT 1, REIT 2, and Street Capital Fund, which is also known as the Traffic Impact Fee Fund. And Big Rock, that debt is being paid for by the levy, which is coming from the general So the summary of the capital projects, basically what was, the massive change from the first public hearing is that the roadway overlay and reconstruction, that has been removed due to removing the funding for the transportation benefit district. So if that transportation benefit district is then, is funded, then that will in turn go back into the overlay and reconstruction. And I believe all the rest has remained the same, with some very big capital projects coming forward in the 2019-2020 budget. And then for capital equipment, we are requesting to do- And then for capital equipment, we are requesting to do a dump truck with a snow attachment and finance that purchase out for 10 years. That vehicle is estimated to have a life cycle of about 20 years. So we feel very comfortable with spreading, it's a lease-to-own option, so we feel very comfortable about making that, bringing that forward. There are two police Dodge Chargers that are requested for 2019 and one in 2020. And one from the original budget was removed. And there are two pickup trucks that are being requested from Public Works. And with the year addition, they added a little additional cost. Also, a small SUV within the building department to replace an older vehicle. They also are asking for a windshield shredder and a riding lawnmower. So next steps. There's been quite a bit that's already been completed to date. Again, over the course of October, really not just department heads, a lot of city staff have put together quite a few budget presentations, and council has had their budget discussions. And we are hoping that within November, that those budget discussions get wrapped up. We also, just this evening, previously had a DCC presentation and continued council discussions. We also have, we're about to open the second, did open the second public hearing on revised proposed 2019, '20 budget, which we are going to continue and remain, leave open until November 20th to make sure that we are allowing the community to speak their voice for this budget, this upcoming first biennial budget. On November 13th, we are, there is a meeting scheduled tentatively in order to continue budget discussions for the final budget, pending council's thought process and decision on that. And on November 20th, there's a council meeting. At that council meeting, we do need to adopt the property tax ordinance, which is due by December 1st for King County. And finally, within, hopefully on either November 20th or December 4th, we will be looking at adopting a final budget for the city of Duval. And that concludes my portion of the presentation. Thank you. We don't have anybody sign up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify this evening? All right, seeing none, Mayor President Meyer.
I would ask that we forward the public comments from the beginning of the council to be included and on the record for the public hearing, just because I think the intent of those individuals was to speak to the budget and to the changes from here on in.
I think he's referring to...
Yeah, just not sure how that works. I'm looking into finding out if that's something that can be a complimentary proposition.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and leave the hearing open until November 20th, and then we'll move on to the business. Next segment of business is transportation benefit district business, and it's a finding options discussion, which will be led by City Administrator and Planning Director, Ms. Laura Thomas.
Lady Mayor, council members of our community. So this is a recycled presentation that we had earlier in the budget process. This evening is an opportunity to go through our formalized process and for you to act as the board, essentially, of the transportation benefit district. So just giving a little bit of history for those of our members in the audience that are here this evening. The city passed Ordinance 1186 in 2015, and this ordinance created the Duval Transportation Benefit District officially. The purpose of the district is to provide a source for improvement, maintenance, preservation, and protection of the city's transportation infrastructure, to protect the city's long-term investments in the infrastructure, and to reduce the risk of transportation facility failure, to improve safety, continue optimal performance of its infrastructure over time, to support economic development, and to avoid more expensive infrastructure replacement in the future. At that time, the council on line 1216, which is after this, established the council as the governing body, the transportation district, and that was by Ordinance 1191. Later in 2016, the Duval City Council considered implementing a $20 vehicle license fee, but it was tabled indefinitely at that time. What we want to talk about this evening is some options that the council has, and we talked about these a little bit within our budget process. The most commonly used option is what we call a councilmatic option, and that is a vehicle license fee. To start it off, you would, if it's councilmatic, you would have a $20 vehicle approved fee, and that was approved by the legislature in 2005. That's when they enacted the ability for us to collect $20. After 24 months, you can increase that from $20 to $40 councilmatically. And 24 months after that, you can increase it up to $50. Once you go into a process of voter-approved, a sales tax could be utilized at up to 0.2%. Or you can go with a vehicle license fee of $20 or up to $100. So we did provide some additional monetary information. This was a slide that was also part of the public hearing, it was just more condensed. So what we looked at was our revenue, our estimate for revenue from sales tax this year at the end of the year is about $990,000. Although since this has been completed, we actually believe that we're going to hit more likely than not the million-dollar mark. And so if you did a sales tax at 0.2, you would end up with about $198,000. And over the biennium, that could equate to $399,000. We did talk about, you know, a little bit about what the process would be to go to the voters, and looking at the timeframe, and then also talking about if it were voted on, how long is the lifetime before you see that revenue? We also looked at a five-year average, just to kind of see, you know, if in '14, we were at $659,000 in sales tax revenue. And then this year, we've been steadily going up since 2014. And so we looked, you know, what would that look like at an average? And if we averaged it over the last several years, you would look at about $163,000 a year. We also looked at the license fee. And so the last run by city staff looking at it, I believe, was in 2014, when we had about 5,600 registered vehicles, and with a tab of $20, it would create about $112,000 a year. Obviously, in 2018, our community's growing, so now our vehicles, and so we have about 6,600 vehicles this year. And that would equate to about $132,000 in revenue. We did look at, again, a five-year average, and when we look at that, it was $122,000. We did also look, obviously, at the biennium as well. We did get some information as we were doing research with other finance directors. We looked at, you know, what was that 80% collection? Because the majority of finance directors said, you're not really going to want that 100%. I cannot authenticate that, but that's what at least we were told at that time. Other considerations that I think, you know, that the council needs to look at, and obviously the community as well, is you always look at, you know, kind of the cost-benefit approach in terms of anything that you do that's policy-driven. So a $20 fee, it puts the burden on our existing Duval residents, so they would pay a greater share of the road that were cost. And we have people that go through our community and visit as well. And so it would be borne by just our community alone. It generates a little bit less revenue, but it's likely to be more stable. It doesn't require vote of the people unless you choose to go to a different fee right out of the gate. There is about a six-month delay after adoption, and you do have an option to increase back to 24 months. You could seek a higher fee sooner, but you'd have to put it out before a vote. The sales tax is, you know, revenue is definitely tied more closely to the strength of the economy. So it could be, you know, higher, or it could be lower in some years. So you have to be really careful how you potentially budget for that and really monitor it quarterly. It does require a vote of the people, and it can fail. I mean, obviously, that happens. There are some election costs, depending on what time of year we would run it, and it might take up to a year to implement it. But this does allow for additional transparency in community education, hosting, and community meetings. So it is, I think, a more transparent process than a councilmatic process. That was the end of my slides. So I will go ahead and take any questions that you have.
Councilmember Walker.
Here's the record. The whole issue about the council basically being a councilated benefit district and then the, using the right terms, but basically a control of administrative piece to the city. There is a second resolution that I didn't recall, but I also don't think that resolutions explained well at the time it was presented and then passed by council. So the whole thing about transportation benefit district and the discussion we had through the same committee, that we potentially had need to meet separately, have a separate meeting and separate noticing. We don't need to do that because essentially, the TBD, the council at the time, transferred the administrative rights basically to yourself, but also to the city. And I'm wanting a lot of things together. But basically, we're fine, meaning as a council, being the TBD, to summarize things very briefly, because I just wanted to...
Councilmember Walker's point, I also thought, I think he's absolutely correct, it wasn't very clear when we passed that resolution.
I did not remember that, is what we were doing, or I probably would have had second thoughts, but I probably won't explain the way it was. So that's just that, because Councilmember everything was pretty clear. Are we okay to talk about this in my camp here? So that's that. I've already made my statement clear. I think the sales tax would be a better option. I think it goes to the voters. A $20 fee is easy, more easily done now, generates revenue now. But I think the cost, the revenue is also fixed, whereas the sales tax can also expand as economy expands, and it's sort of, already sort of fixed to inflation in that way. So I also just like to give choices like this to the public. That's just my personal preference and my personal ethics. I think it's a better way to go.
Thank you, Councilmember Walker. Anyone else have any comments or discussion? I think, as I was probably trying to think about a little bit of direction this evening, potentially. Councilmember McHenry.
Thanks. Yeah, I'll just restate. What I think I've said before is, I like the sales tax approach, because it goes to a vote of the people, and I think it's a better source for funding this. I don't know if you need anything else, or if that's okay.
Councilmember Nathalie.
Just because we have an audience today, I thought I'd say one more thing about why I would recommend the sales tax option. And the main reason is because it would make the funding of the TBD be shared by all the people who use the roads, who come in and use our roads to shop at our stores and different things like that. The delivery trucks that come and deliver packages. All of those things will generate sales tax, and they will pay it to the system. And if we want the vehicle tab, it'd be residents, once again, paying the full cost. Unfortunately, when you're a veteran community, that's kind of the nature of things. And so anything that I can do to make sure that we find other funding sources besides our own residents, that's what I'm trying to do.
We also, Councilmember Nikki. So if we do the tax increase, then, and that will take a while for us to get the funding from that, correct?
Correct, at least a year after approval, or upwards, a year after approval.
So while we're waiting, didn't we discuss the idea of maybe creating a situation where we would pass the councilmatic tabs with the idea that if we put that on the ballot, we would cancel that?
You could, in fact, have an ordinance written that specifies that you have the $20 tabs until a sales tax major goes on the ballot. And once it's approved, the tax goes away. You can write law that way.
So I would be in favor of that, because I can't imagine not funding that situation with zero for what we need with streets.
You could also use fund balance as well, if you wanted to. There's, there are plenty, there are other options as well. But that's a careful decision that council has to make. Mayor President Meyer.
My initial take on this was to support the tabs. But, Councilor, my impression of our meetings, I had a pretty strong opinion on that, and seemed to be expressing public's dislike for tabs. I'd be comfortable paying tabs for the specific use of Transportation Benefit District, which is a focused set of projects that go directly to projects. But, you know, after taking that consideration, I support the sales tax vote. And if it, and if it doesn't pass, I would revert to my stance of supporting the tabs, the councilmatic action. Because it, either way, it needs to get funded, and I think that's a reasonable way to approach it. And I think it's a win-win for the community. Hopefully, they can understand, hopefully, folks can learn about this and understand it, that it really is, it's a good thing, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Heather.
I too was in favor of the tabs initially, because I was, I'd been more worried about the immediate funding of this. And so I spoke to the modeling tabs in one of our last meetings in discussing the sales tax. I'm actually in favor of that, but I worry about the gap time. What are we going to do? How are we going to fund it in between? I don't know that I would be in favor of doing the tabs and letting the community know that we would remove that once a vote for the sales tax comes in, because I don't, that would worry me. That would have, if that didn't happen.
If it's written into law, it's required. It's written into law, you have to file tab. So if anyone, that's what happens. And third, there are plenty of fees that sunset. So for example, like some of the car tab, car tab options that have been around, like for example, King County was temporarily allowed councilmaticly to use tab fees without voter approval. And that reverted back for a given period of time. The same thing's happened with REIT, being able to use REIT for maintenance operations. And statutorily, under the state legislation, state legislation that passed, it was a temporary issue, and it sunsetted on a specific date. So it is pretty common to have sunset issues on ordinances.
The other thing that worries me about doing that is what if in a year from now, we needed more funding for this? And we needed to do tasks at some point? Then we've told people we were going to take them off and not charge the $20 tax. So I just kind of, I just, I just don't know. That part worries me a bit, but I know we need funding immediately. So I'd like to figure out where that's coming from personally. But I am for the sales tax. I agree with Councilmember Nathalie on how she feels about the sales tax, that it gets spread out to the people that are coming into our communities.
Councilmember Walker. Or you've already spoken, so I guess Councilmember I need to. Or you've already spoken, so I guess Councilmember I need to...
I support the sales tax. My fellow councilmembers spoke very adequately about the reasons between the two options and what makes no sense. The only thing I might add with the sales tax, I think that discussion with our citizens is huge for us. I also worry a little bit about not having immediate funds, but I think we have time and I'd rather take time to engage the citizens and be able to move forward with the funding basis. I think this would meet our needs going on into the future. And then lastly, our sales tax is relatively low compared to most of other jurisdictions in the area. And for that reason, I think that we're still, we're not hurting our business by saying we're charging more sales tax than other regions. So I think we're in good shape to be able to go to our citizens and make a good case for it. Hopefully, that will pass and we'll have a strong funding source for transportation needs.
So, go ahead.
One last just comment in general to point out in the mayor's budget that the Batten Road project is funded. And that would represent some road improvements that are still occurring through work that the staff has done through a grant. But then the move to the mayor's budget was able to figure out a way to keep that funded and move it forward. So just to address the gap.
Thank you, Councilmember Meyer. I think what, like definitely, there is definitely consensus on the sales tax. There's, I have a question on kind of what we do in that gap. I think what I would recommend is if you were going to have a council retreat in January, that maybe this be an item that you talk about, and we can prepare some information for you.
Councilmember McHenry.
So in regards to the gap, are we saying then that there will be no money out of this final budget for sign for that zero?
I did not hear a consensus on that. If you want to go and ask the consensus of each of the councilmembers, then that would give us a little bit more guidance for the final budget.
Is that something we will discuss further in the budget process about what we would put towards the zero in the budget?
You're welcome to have that conversation. If council's prepared to have that conversation in the right direction this evening, you're welcome to.
Is that a very much concerning?
It is. And pretty much at this point, in the remaining funds, the budget is balanced for appropriately proposing use of fund balance after fully funded reserves contingency in our internal funds. You are welcome to make a decision on whether or not we want to use fund balance or other things for the budget to fund. If you want to have that discussion this evening, you're welcome to.
Well, I mean, the basic needs have to be taken care of, and there are some items as councilmember Mayor Proton, I brought up with the economic development proposal. We do have the human services, some of these there. I'm just thinking the basic MNO of operations is something we have to just leave at zero.
So it's just... Councilmember Meyer and Councilmember Walker.
The TBD hasn't been funded until now. Before the TBD was created, it wasn't funding coming in. I don't think continuation of the status quo for 16 months is going to mean the end of things. I respect that it has, that it needs to be funded, and I think we're taking appropriate action there. As indicated, the budget as it stands is funded to, from any fund balance of streets from 18, to fund the match for the Batten project. And then the streets fund is supported by the general fund to the tune of approximately $100,000. And that's in addition to the $600,000 that's from gas tax. So, or it's, I think it's not, but there's gas tax. And I think six is, is 600,000 goes to staffing, and then 300,000 is dispersed throughout the city. So there are funds that go to streets. Is it adequate? No. Are we doing something? I think this represents a positive step toward and a minimal, a minimal delay.
Councilmember Walker.
Some other things to discuss in a more brief, but some other thing. I don't think this lacks any critical need in, I mean, there's need in our streets, but a lot of maintenance has been deferred, like other things in our city. But the key thing is that we preserve the TID grant that we have for Batten Road. We don't want to see grant applications not being implemented. So that's being addressed. Yeah, I do want to look forward to this point and think that, and I know that this council will do a better job than prior councils that I've served with. But we, councils that I served with could, could have done this before. And we could have talked about the sales tax option, which was never a topic other councils or primarys wanted to discuss. So we are where we are, and we are where we are. And we can move forward from here. And I think, you know, if we can get this funding implemented, it would, it would serve the need to, to address the needs in our streets, some of it. I think it's a better option than the tab T, which I think serves aggressive tax. I think psychologically, it's probably not going to go well with the public. And I think if the council can help to structure what types of ballot measures for this one, and then, you know, structure the ordinance and the information before it becomes something you can't do as the resources of the city. Project list, Mayor Proton's point, and other things, and communication, what level of communication like the public to see. I think that would be an important thing for the council to have good involvement in, because the last time this was done, postcards were mailed out with information that I thought was not complete, to say the least. But to be involved, and I think if the council's involved in this and wants to see it go through, then this would be a major achievement that other councils could not do in the last eight
Councilmember Walker.
I agree with you, Councilmember McHenry, that we do need to, this shouldn't be a zero, but I'm not sure if we can come up with a, where the funds would come from to, you know, put in that account at this point in time, right now. But I agree with you that it shouldn't be a zero. So I hope we can talk about it sooner rather than later, figuring out how to fund it.
Councilmember McHenry.
So I just want some point of clarification in the past, which we had discussed this, and in regards to sales tax, any kind of tax with sales, just a reminder that in the past, other councils had to deal with the fact that the business community were constantly coming to us and letting us know they did not want any sort of taxes or increases of any sort. And we're doing much better now with our businesses. But that is kind of a historical point that I want to make, because I think that's something we have to understand.
I think it also needs to be pointed out that there are councilmembers or elected officials sitting here, that we're all those councils that supported those ideals. And it wasn't just one councilmember that wanted to do something else, that we just, the votes just weren't there. And to sweep all elected officials into that body is not really fair to those that have been working for this for several years as well. Councilmember McHenry.
So I'm happy about the grant being taken care of. That to me is one of the most critical things. We don't want to lose that. And if I recall, I don't know, can you remind me, did we get an idea? I think that Batten Road is potentially the one. Was it already reconstruction or was it overlay? Just to get a sense of, is that the most critical in any ways? Did we get an idea?
They only have a grant for.
Okay. But there's, I mean, the project list, you know, I think Mayor Proton Meyer had said before that projects that aren't funded don't get done, or any of them, that to the best of our knowledge, none of them are at a critical point within the waiting time where we'd be waiting for the sales tax.
We haven't, we didn't honestly propose any projects because we have not had those types of resources. And so we relied honestly on grant and grant matching to move projects, whether it's for real capital of new projects or restoration.
Okay. So I just want to say it's not ideal with the zero, but I feel that the sales tax is the right thing to do, and that I think we'll be okay with the moving forward with the gap, and it's the best that we can do right now, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right. Just one point of clarification. We did, because it goes off a little bit, what Councilmember McHenry says, we did request additional dollars for other, essentially overlay restoration, that those were the items that got zeroed out. But we knew that it was really important to fund the project that we have a grant for, and so we didn't have a fund balance. But yes, we had projects.
Councilmember Nathalie.
This is just a super quick comment. Right now, just to, things in their perspective, we're getting a lot of road overlay, road reconstructions done with the development that's going on. And so I think we're actually making a lot of progress on our payment management system, just on roads that were designated as needing work. And we're getting a lot of that done with some of the large construction projects, is my understanding.
I would maybe, I don't know if you can, I can't answer that question.
So let's turn down Public Works, councilmembers. So back in 2013, Public Works, before I got here, Public Works did a payment management system that I think all the councilmembers have seen, and went and drove every road in the city and gave it an index number. And that was back in 2013. And we've identified a couple portions of the city that they're already in developed neighborhoods that the roads are failing, and new development will not fix those roads. And those are the ones that we allocated dollars back in 2013 and 2012 for a comprehensive overlay program and reconstruction within the city in order to offset having to completely rebuild roads because of allocating and failed subgrade. And that hasn't been funded. It's, we've had $20,000 for our overlay program over the last couple of years, and that's not enough to do anything with when it comes to overlay our asphalt. So it's, the indexes throughout the city, they're only getting worse. They're not getting any better, so.
Councilmember McHenry.
So in regards to that push, to that point, I had a question, because as I recall, we looked at overlays, that if they got to a certain point, I mean, my deepest concern is we can patch and pray and fix to a certain degree, but my concern is that it gets to a point where it's a complete redo, and that costs way more than what we would like to be paying.
Yes, absolutely. For instance, the Parkway neighborhood, I don't know if anyone's familiar with the roads in that neighborhood, but that is if we were to get an overlay or reconstruction budget, that is one of the first neighborhoods that we would go to. And honestly, we, we know what the roads look like, but we haven't done the comprehensive indexing to see what it looks like now compared to five years ago. I can tell you with some of the big trucks that were driving over it, which we had asked the contractors that did our Parkway pond project not to do, but truck drivers sometimes do what they want, it just makes allocating worse. And we still have sections of road that are failing, and I possibly will need to have some grade repair. And that gets to the magnitude of 10, more expensive than overlaying. So just one neighborhood could be $500,000 in pavement restoration.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll be moving forward with this. Next up, we have on new business, Agenda Bill 18-64, the 2019-2020 on contract for discussion only, Ms. Thomas.
Good evening again, mayor, council members of the community. I am continuing, we're obviously the Public Works chapter, and this evening, this is pretty common, this is what we enter into consultant roster every year. So I'm promoted as our planning consultant on this list. One of the nice things that municipal research does is they create a roster that we can all pool into for architectural and engineering services. And so in your agenda bill, it shows you for the 1920 budget, the different firms that we're looking at, that we typically historically contract out with. So Transpo, SDA, Murray Pigs, KPG, Plenty Use, CSA, Andy Kovak, West Coast Consulting is a newer one in the last year or so. That's our beneficial environmental services right now. So if you have any questions, I can, I can answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Thomas? If there aren't any, and if there aren't any concerns, is council okay with moving this forward to a vote in the next meeting? And if so, are you okay with being on the consent agenda? Okay? Consent agenda? All right. Councilmember Walker. Looks like there's consensus, so I won't finish till I round the room. Perfect. Put that on the consent agenda. Next item is Agenda Bill 18-65, contract amendment, hearing examiner for discussion only, Ms. Thomas again. And this is the same situation, so please let us know if you'd like to go ahead and move on at the next meeting. And if so, I want to have the consent agenda.
Greetings again, mayor, councilmembers of the community. It's this time of year when we start renewing our contracts. We've had a really good experience with John Gahl. He's been a hearing examiner in this state for decades. I've worked with him professionally for just over 20 years, and he is coming in probably to the sunset of his career, but we're thankful that he's been able to help us along the way. So the hearing examiner is the person that is essentially like a judge advocate, that when we have projects to look forward, we have policies, and what he does is he makes sure and holds our feet to the fire that we're applying our policies accurately and correctly, and that we're not unfairly asking a developer to do something that we don't have proof of. So I recall is chats and documents system. And so I will take any questions.
Any questions? Are we moving it on to the vote and consent? Okay?
Yes.
All right. Looks like it's clear. Let's move on with the next item. Agenda Bill 18-66, interlocal agreement amendment, City of Redmond Dispatch Service, and this would be a similar request.
Good evening, mayor, council, members of the audience, carrier permission. This is real quick, the only thing that applies to the back page of your agreement. I reached out to the City of Redmond early in the year when we decided to go to Bay Area to make their dispatch contract coincide with our Bay Area. And it actually works well for them as well, because they're now on the same Bay Area schedule as we are. So they agreed to do that, and it's just about a 3% increase, which brings, nothing's changed in the contract.
Any questions for Chief R? Everyone okay with moving this to consent at the next meeting? All right. Thank you. And next up is Agenda Bill 18-67, grant award for King County Water and Land Resources for discussion only at this point, Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers of our community. Whenever we go after watershed-type grants, it's definitely a joint effort between Public Works, Engineering, and Planning. And so we have been applying for this grant for a couple of years, and we are finally successful. This is for the erosion habitat study in the Cormac Park. We did get a letter that said we would have netted $3,000 that we requested. We also have a $5,000 match, but that's in in-kind staffing time, which isn't, you know, we're not giving away, we're not... we're not giving away, we're not taking, we're not having to pay somebody $5,000. It's actually, you know, Larissa, Owana, and myself that are going to be doing some of that work. And so this process is to accept the grant offer.
Any questions for Ms. Thomas? All right, are you ready to move that forward for, do you want to put that on the consent agenda or are you ready to vote at the next meeting? Mayor Porzingis.
I think we should put it on the consent agenda.
You guys are on the roll tonight. All right, that makes it out very happy. Next up is discussion and decision, Agenda Bill 18-68, contract toll-to supply line replacement design. And Ms. Grondell will be presenting this as Mr. Joe Grant tells me.
So, yes, what Sean told, good evening, council, mayor, council members. So what Sean told me was really nothing's changed from what you got in your, in your packet as far as information, except that we came to a total project budget of $166,098. So that wasn't included in the, in the packet, and I apologize. We can, we'll get this exhibit to.
And we, didn't Sean email us to?
I don't know if he did or not, he just.
I want to say.
Okay.
And just ask the members of the audience that are like, what are they talking about? $168,000, $166,000. This is for the toll-to water line replacement. It's identified in our CIP, and it's specifically identified in our 1920 Viennium budget. It's about 2,800 millimeter feet of water line replacement.
Any questions, feedback? If you'd like to make a decision on this, we can't this evening, and if so, I entertain a motion.
Move that we authorize the mayor to sign this.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Thank you. Motion passes, thank you. Next item, last item of new business, Agenda Bill 18-69, resolution regarding Big Rock Golf and user fees.
Good evening, mayor, council members of the community. This item is a resolution that isn't just for the ball fields fee schedule, but also reflects a commitment that was made previously with our council and our community. When the Big Rock ball fields were established and they were constructed, there was an understanding and actual resolution that's in your packet that stated that we would use fees towards turf replacement. We, you know, obviously in 2018, didn't budget that way. All of the fees for that were utilized for operation and maintenance within the ball fields. It wasn't the norm before we would historically fund Big Rock ball fields out of the general fund. And as part of the budget process, we had proposed a utility tax and 1%, and council said, you know, let's not go there right now. And so there wasn't the support for the utility tax. And so we obviously, you know, looked and considered some other options. It's a pretty decent amount of money that we have to find to provide the operation maintenance, but it's a better and better part. And the community asked for that improvement, so we have to figure out how to fund it. So we went kind of back to the table and talked to council in our Cow meetings to request amending the resolution that dedicates 50% of the fees collected to go towards operation maintenance and 50% to go towards the ball field replacement. And so we went for, with that premise after talking with council. It's not a final decision, but we have to bring it forward as part of this budget now. We also looked at increasing the fees traditionally by CPI. And I know that during our council, the whole, we looked at a potentially different option, which is essentially rounding up the numbers. And so councilmember Atherton provided that information to staff yesterday, and we were definitely thankful for that because it was a little odd to see fees that were 51, 60, 132. You know, it does make sense to have a whole number. And so if council wants to move in that direction, we can definitely use, we can use that approach, and we'll go back and we can make that number into the budget.
Discussion? Councilmember Atherton.
I just wanted to mention too, on here, it was just rounding up on a few of them. For the adult rates, those changed a little bit more than that CPI. And that was to better align what our neighboring jurisdictions are doing, really kind of regionally, that the adults pay a higher rate, whether they're residents or non-residents. It appears that councilmember Hope also saw the same when she did a little bit of analysis herself. So that was the only other thing I wanted to mention for the people who are here, people listening, that yes, it was an adult increase.
Councilmember Hope.
When we compared to the other cities, the adult rates started at about $50 an hour, went up as high as $100 an hour. And then the lighting fees stayed the same whether you were a non-resident or a resident, and they averaged $20 to $24. So maybe there's, I don't know if we want to consider increasing the resident rate. If we have contracts, maybe that's not possible, but just wanted to make that up.
Further discussion? Mayor Porzingis.
I guess I would ask that we get to between now and our next meeting to look at this, because we just received the tables from councilmember Atherton. Just to digest that, I support the slight fee increase either way, but just like a little bit of time to look at the tables and compare.
That is totally fine. I just do want to be transparent that we're going to be holding a public hearing on this item, and so we'll continue to carry it forward. We can always adjust the numbers, but I think it really is our full intent as staff and as a council, that I would like us to come back next year and do a more thorough and representative analysis that looks at cities that might be a little more like us. As mentioned, I like to use, you know, Redmond or Monroe as an example. They're just in a different, unique spot for, you know, for financing. We're a small, isolated city. Our budgets are a little bit limited, and we do need to make sure that we're trying to recover as much as we can so that we can utilize the field and put the money that we need to for future turf replacement. I'm not saying that they're out of line, I just think that we need to go through a formal process and look at imperables.
Any other councilmembers have feedback? Councilmember Walker.
So we'll have a hearing on this rate increase, is that correct?
It's, it's for the rate increase and for acknowledging that 50% is going to go to operation and maintenance, and 50% is going to go to the field. I want to make it really clear that it's, it's two-pronged. It's to increase the fee and it's to state that the money's going to be essentially divided by two, one for this law and one for that law.
So then to have the hearing, we would have the ordinance for the hearings about?
Yeah, and it's actually in your packet.
Correct. So I guess what we're talking about, what minor changes the council will want to make now or sees necessary to make now to that ordinance part of the hearing, is that correct?
That would be, that would be really nice, but I do believe we have a workshop on Tuesday so we can finalize the ordinance. It's not, you don't have to make the recommendation or decision.
That's all I'm saying, is that we just maybe recruit another ordinance and if we want to round some numbers up or bring some adult rates to be somewhat similar to immediate surrounding city region, and we can look at that. And that's what the ordinance is, that hearing's about. And I'm interested in hearing what, what any leads or participants that use that feel like to say if they want to testify at the hearing.
Any other feedback?
I'll, I'll just say that I talked to several members of the community that we can, over we have on this, and they all really like the idea of increasing rates annually by CPI to make sure that we're keeping up with the actual, as close as possible, the actual cost of operations and maintenance of the field, so that we're not constantly going back to the level or depleting the general fund. So there does appear, and these were very different community members, so not the people I usually have these discussions with. So I think it was a strong indicator to me that the community really does want us to be planning for it and making sure that we're taking steps to have these things automatically take care of themselves. That's all I'll say on that.
All right, any further discussion on this item? All right, moving on then, to unfinished business, Agenda Bill 18-58, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract for 2018-24, an active off and associated purchase order in the amount of $27,900 for the asset management system hosted software. And this is for discussion and decision, Ms. Grondell.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and public. So I'm super happy to bring this back, and hopefully we can, we can get asset management rolling. We had contracts, well, essentially approved, looked over by IT, and our insurance, and our city county attorney. So all of the contracts are in line, not much, nothing really has changed. I put a little bit more information in the, the staff report about how, what the annual maintenance will look like over four years, but that will come at a later date with a separate contract. So this contract is only for the purchase and implementation of the software license.
Do we have any questions from Ms. Grondell? Councilmember Atherton.
Just super quick, do you have any confirmation that, I think it was a 10% over four years versus 10% per year, is that right?
Yes.
Did you get confirmation from?
Yes. This is what they will stick to. This is, these are the numbers that they provided to us.
Okay.
And they said, yes, this will be not to exceed, won't be a dollar more, dollar less.
Perfect, because all the supporting documents still show 10% per year.
It's a 10% over, not to, not to exceed 10% over four years, cumulative.
Thank you. Yes, that sounds great.
Any other questions, anybody? All right, do we have a motion this evening?
So move.
Wait, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes, thank you. Final item of unfinished business is Agenda Bill 18-63, approve and authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement between City of Duval and Windville Fire and Rescue relating to the administration of fire life saving inspection and permitting program. And this is for decision and, or discussion and or decision, Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, mayor, council members of the audience. Tonight, we will not be asking for a decision, and that's too, well, really two-pronged. One, because we're still pending attorney review, but number two is that it has associated fees, it goes on a merit, and our history is that we have a fee we hold for sharing. And so we are hosting a public hearing to, to hear and weigh in on the fees. And the other reason is that Windville Fire and Rescue utilizes the software that I talked about, and staff wanted to go through a demo or through IT. So we did have a demo last week, and the software is, is actually a really good tool. It's very similar to the active off system, and we can use it internally. And we're actually hoping that maybe the fire district here will utilize it as well because then we can all cross-talk between the fire, both the fire districts. One other really nice tool is that we can import all of the buildings and exits and what their infrastructure is, so that if there's an emergency or something happens, that can be pulled up immediately by either fire, if there's an emergency, or if there's an incident that police has to respond to. So I really liked looking at the software. So this step now is bringing IT into it. We don't want to waste their time unless we're like, yes, at this first level, it looks like it could be a good tool. So our next step is to work with IT to work at this. And the software is not very expensive. I put $1,000 in there, but it looks like the version that we would be looking at is about $450 to qualify it. And on the high end, would be as high as $880 a year for what we call software maintenance. And as you know, we don't ever want to bring forward an IRA or policy or a project where council doesn't know, you know, kind of what the full cost potentially is of entering into an agreement or a process or a project. So we wanted to let you know that. That would be something that we would follow through probably in January. We do want to try and get through the interlocal process, interlocal agreement process by the end of the year because we don't have those services currently, and we do need them. But we do need to hold a public hearing for the fees. And so we just finished the, the resolution that will be, that we will bring back for hearing and then ask for approval of IRA and the fees, and then we will come back to request approval of the software maintenance. Do we have to have it? No. Would it be a nice thing? Yes, because then, you know, we can talk with other rental partners. I can take any questions.
Any questions from Ms. Thomas this evening? All right, seeing none. That was our last item of unfinished business. We do have a closed session this evening to discuss collective bargaining in our RCW 42.30.10.41 sub B. We expect it to take approximately 30 minutes, and it will convene in three minutes so that folks will have the opportunity to take a rest or break. And then we do not intend to take the action after the session. Thank you.